She doesn't have every right to be here.
I'm not saying she doesn't, I'm just saying she's wired here. Wait a minute, why am I a part of this agenda?
We're going to...
Why am I a part of the agenda? Isn't the wake supposed to be...
Okay.
Thanks, bye bye.
We're gonna come to order and today is the Wednesday, August 6th, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Schitts.
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Here.
Commissioner Giraud.
Here.
Commissioner Manoukian.
Here.
And Chair King.
Here. A report regarding post hoc agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, July 30th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, and would you please all join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes from July 16th, 2008. Any comments or corrections to say, to say?
I move that we approve the minutes. Support?
I actually have a couple of observations, I'm sorry. On page three, under Chairperson King and so on, where I was just talking, I asked staff to research consequences of eliminating use variances. You've got here two, five, or 10 scenarios. It was just a number of scenarios. They don't necessarily have to be two, five, or 10. And the only other thing I'd want to add is point of clarification that there is no way that use variances would be gotten rid of unless there was a mechanism to establish renewing existing use variances because public outcry would be so great that I didn't think council would be in agreement with that. That said, if you would accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion in second?
I move so amended.
All right, good. Thank you, roll call, please.
Commissioner Schitts.
Aye.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Giraud.
Abstained.
Commissioner Manoukian.
Aye.
And Chair King.
Aye, on a vote of four to zero with one abstention, the minutes of July 16th were approved as noted. Let me just make sure I don't have anything here for oral communication cards. And it doesn't appear that I do, so we'll move on to old business. It's tentative tract map 62894. This was continued from July 2nd of 2008. Its location is 370 through 376 Salem Street. It's a request for a time extension and an approved tentative tract map to construct 17 new condominium units on an 18,456 square foot lot within the R-1250 high density residential zone. The applicant is Tony Bagramian, managing partner of 376 Salem LLC. Staff is represented by Roger Kiesel, senior planner, and it is a motion to approve a 36 month time extension of the tentative tract map. Staff overview, please.
I'm filling in for Roger Kiesel. You did see this, there's two, you saw this item two meetings ago. On July 2nd, as noted before, at that time you had a presentation and the concern was raised of whether or not other departments had seen a time extension. Normally they don't, we did route it. The other departments took a look at it. Every department said they were fine with the conditions as they were or they gave us the standard conditions. And with one exception, we did get a comment from Neighborhood Services, who normally does not comment on tract maps, and they were concerned with the state of the property. They were just concerned with the property needs to be kept up. Since that time, the applicant is working with Building and Safety, have pulled us, they're working to pull a sewer cap permit so they can demo the building and proceed with it. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The comment that came from Neighborhood Services was that you not grant the time extension. However, I think the comments were really related. I don't think they realized that it was a time extension and not a new project. I think they were more concerned that action happened on it and that the property brought into conformance. I don't think that there's an understanding of what that would mean. It's a tentative tract map, that, you know, they have three year approval and they can ask for additional timeframe. I don't think they realized that at all when they give a comment. I think they just saw a project with some outstanding code enforcement issues and wanted to have any kind of mechanism they had to have the applicant address those quickly. So with that, I don't have any further information on this process other than that the applicant did request a three year time extension on July 15th. That was after our last meeting. Arnold Schwarzenegger signed a bill that automatically extends all tract maps for one year. So right now, we're, when you, last time we met, the application would have expired on November 14th, 2008. And there is a one year time extension right now. As it stands, it would be November 14th, 2009 that it would expire. And so your approval here, if you grant what the applicant is requesting, would actually give him another four year approval, four years from today, rather than three.
All right, questions for staff? I do not have a speaker card. Is there anybody representing the applicant seen? You are?
The applicant is here in the audience.
We do have a question, sir.
But it's of Laura.
But it's of Laura?
Of Laura.
Okay, then let's back up. All right.
Yes, just real quick, is there, I'm sensitive to what the Neighborhood Services is concerned about. Is there a way we put conditions on the time extension that would help them enforce their desire to get the property cleaned up? Or do you think we need to do anything about that particular issue?
No, we can't add conditions of approval. I mean, your options are to not grant a time extension. Right, however, I think the Neighborhood Services comment did have the effect of having the applicant now come in and work on getting a sewer cap permit. He is attempting to fix it, and that's our understanding at this point. But I'm sure he could add additional information if you have questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll hesitate, make sure, okay. All right, you haven't filled in card, but for purposes of identification, if you would, please.
Palodia Gukasian, I'm one of the partners in the project.
Okay. Telegraphing what I think we just want to find out is, obviously Neighborhood Services hasn't been very happy with you. Let's just hear what you've been doing to make them happy.
We're already clearing up the brushes and eliminating all the fire hazards and over the weekend, the sewers will be capped. The property will be boarded up, so there's restricted access to it. That's pretty much the long and short of whatever the Neighborhood Services has been asking for.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant?
What's the timing to actually move forward with demolition and then ultimately construction?
We're trying to get it done as soon as we can. We're waiting for our financing to come through so we can put it through with the bank. Because we do have to hire contractors and they have to get paid through a third party from the bank. At the same time, our contractors are working to get a grading bond so we can pull the building permits at the same time. That's gonna be done hopefully within the next few weeks.
And how long of construction do you anticipate?
We're gonna push ahead and probably finish under a year. Given the weather and whatever's gonna come up, a year or two, 14 months, conservative.
Okay. And thank you very much, sir.
My pleasure.
All right, any closing comments, Laura?
I have no further comments.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
In light of the fact that we have already seen a year long extension, is there any way to amend the motion that we have in front of us to go from not to exceed three years to not to exceed two years or something like that?
Sure. You just need to make that motion for a 24 month time extension rather than a 36 month time extension.
But that 24 month time extension would automatically be a 36 month, de facto?
De facto, correct.
And is that renewable, so if not completed in...
I'd have to double check. I believe there's one time extension there. I believe the applicant has allowed to come forward one time with a time extension. They could ask for up to five years. In this case, the applicant asked for three years. But I would have to double check on whether they could come back twice.
I don't remember, I don't remember either.
I believe it's one time, I believe they can come back once for up to five years.
All right, thank you. Comments from commissioners, entertain the motion?
My only comment is that I do think that it's important that these kinds of properties do move to the next level, which is construction and completion as quickly as possible so they're not left sitting in the neighborhood as a blight. Even if cleaned up, a vacant property is, in a way, a blight. So I would be interested in finding a way to expedite the project with a limited extension of time.
All right.
Might I suggest a 12 month extension, which would de facto be a 24 month extension?
I...
You can suggest it.
I don't have any problem. I think, I think I tend to think the same way, that that would be, allow us to move it along. Seems like that's acceptable to the applicant. That seemed to be the timeframe he was talking about.
Well, my inclination would be the 24 month, which would, with the Schwarzenegger assigned extra year, that would give him the 36 months that he asked for in the application.
That's my inclination too, just because of the approval process and the construction process. Give a little, a few months of breathing room without having some deadline.
And they will get what they wanted ultimately?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So we could modify the motion to be 24 months, recognizing the new law that was passed. Let's see if we get at least three votes for that motion, if somebody wants to make it.
I'm good for it.
I second.
You have a motion and support to, I guess you need to read a little bit of the motion.
I'll read it. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that after consideration for the request for tentative tract map number 62894, approval of said tentative tract map be extended for a period not to exceed two years until November 14th, 2010. And that we make each and all of the following findings a fact. A, the extension is authorized by Section 16.16.020 Glendale Municipal Code and Section 66452.6 California Government Code. B, the finding made by us in its discretion until November 14th, 2005, remain applicable today. And C, conditions in the neighborhood of tentative tract map number 62894 have not changed to warrant reconsideration of the original approval. Seating second?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, a comment?
Please.
We're gonna extend it for 24 months and the governor's giving him a year or so. The governor takes it to 2009. Our 24 months would take it to 2011, which is what he asked for November 14th, 2011.
And you read 2010?
No, I know. But if we, but if ours, see, our motion has not taken into consideration the automatic extension granted by the governor. That is bootstrapped to this motion. Our motion will take it to 2010 and the governor's automatic extension will automatically take it to 11.
Mr. Gerstein?
That's my understanding.
I think technically it's the reverse. The governor's, the new legislation extends automatically to '09 and so then your motion would add whatever amount of time you'd want to add on to the '09 expiration date. So if you wanted to give, if you wanted to extend it out to 2011, you would just add, make it a 24 month extension.
Well, actually, this motion doesn't specify how many months the extension is. It just says, so we're gonna extend it for a period not to exceed three years from today, which would be November 14th, 2011. So how would you word that motion to take Mr. Schwarzenegger's...
I would suggest an extension to extended by a certain, either date certain or a certain number of months. I actually think you'd better off doing it to a certain number of months because the law is controlling on the automatic extension. So if you say, the board, the commission wants extended by 24 months, automatically that will extend it to 2011.
And that would actually...
By operation of law.
That would be much easier for us to track.
So then, Mr. Chairman...
We go by the date it expires and if we know it was active on this a certain date, we know to give it an additional year. It would actually be pretty hard for us to track something like this if everyone is a bit different. Because what we would see is an expiration date of 2011, it would be likely in the future that somebody could say, oh, this was active in 2008, therefore, they would give it an additional year. So I think you're actually be better calling it November 14th to 2010 because then we would automatically add the additional year. If you say if it's two year time extension...
I, I don't, I don't think that's correct. I mean, I know what you're saying, Laura, but I don't think that's a, yeah, you know...
How about this? I want to be, change the wording in the following way, council. Tract map is hereby extended for a period of 24 months. That's it, that's all we say.
That's, that's, I think what I would suggest.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so we have a motion.
And I will second the amended motion.
I have motion and support, please go roll.
Commissioner Schitts.
Aye.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Giraud.
Aye.
Commissioner Manoukian.
Aye.
And Chair King.
Aye, on a vote of five to zero, tentative tract map 62894 has been granted its extension for 24 months. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 8A. It's new business. It's establishment of a historic district overlay zone for the proposed Royal Boulevard Historic District. Staff is represented by Jay Platt, planner, and the recommendation is a motion to recommend the city council that a Royal Boulevard Historic District overlay zone be established. The project is exempt from the California Environment and Quality Act. And I would just mention going into this, at this moment, I only have two cards from speakers. Staff, over you, please.
All right, good afternoon, Jay Platt for planning staff. This is the first of the three historic districts that are currently moving through the Glendale Planning Department's process for designating districts. This is the commission's first opportunity to hear about the Royal Boulevard District officially. I hope most, if not all, of you have been there and have seen beautiful Royal Boulevard, part of the Rossmoyn tract in, over near Verdugo and near Mountain Avenue. I have a brief presentation, if you'd like. I can run through introducing you to the district and then also to our process that we've arranged for the designation of historic districts. This photo shows you, a contemporary photo at the bottom and an early photo when some of the houses were still under construction in 1926. And here you really see the thing that distinguishes Royal Boulevard visually for a lot of people who are coming through the area, the palm trees that line the curving street that runs up the hill toward Royal Canyon. And you see the baby palm trees at the top. You see our full grown palms today. The proposed district consists of 30 properties on each side of the street between Del Monte and Mountain at the southeast and Princess and Arbois at the northwest. So here you see the properties outlined. And I'm not sure if you would like me to go through the actual process. I included this flow chart in each of your packages with the staff report and I could explain how the process works and...
I think, I'm sorry? If you can make it brief.
I can make it very brief. Basically, the historic district processing Glendale is driven by the citizens of Glendale. We receive nominations from the public asking that we designate or move this through the process for designation. And the residents live within the proposed district. So they're basically saying, our neighborhood is special. We hope you agree. And if you do agree, we hope that you'll designate it so that we can then have some level of regulation that takes into account the historic character of the area. The big difference between what happens to a house in a historic district versus what happens in the rest of Glendale is the design review authority is shifted from the design review board to the Historic Preservation Commission. And in addition, we have a set of guidelines that the city councils approve that are going to be basically the bible of how changes are made in the historic district. And when someone comes to us with a proposal for work, we're going to judge that against what's in the guidelines. If it follows the guidelines, we'll be able to approve it at staff level. If it doesn't follow the guidelines, just like DRB, we'll take it to the Historic Preservation Commission for a deeper discussion. Basically, the process for Royal Boulevard began in February of 2007. And you see on the screen here, I didn't put it on the, in your packages, we're at the second to last stop along the way. And everything that's highlighted in blue here indicates areas where there's public input into the process. And the Historic Preservation Ordinance was crafted in 2006 very carefully to ensure that every step of the way, we have people coming to the various commissions and boards that are hearing, hearing the proposal and making sure that every decision maker along the way gets to hear from the public. In addition, there are two built in petition processes. One where we request a Historic District Resource Survey, which is conducted by an independent consultant. That's early on in the process. 25% of the residents in the area have to approve that. And a petition that was just recently completed in July came to us with over 50% of the homeowners. In fact, it was 77% of the homeowners asking us to create the overlay zone. So of course, this comes to the planning commission because it's a zone change. It's an overlay zone that's proposed. On July 28th, the Historic Preservation Commission voted to recommend that this go to city council with a positive recommendation. And today, you're considering the same, same issue. I don't have any other questions. I'll just give you some, a quick view of what the Historic Resource Survey told us about the neighborhood. Here's the district that you've already seen. And basically, there are nine criteria in the Historic District Ordinance that a district must meet. It only, I'm sorry, it only needs to meet one of the nine. Our consultant found that it met two. Criteria in G, a distinctive example of community planning. And also criteria in E, a unique location representing an established and familiar visual feature of a neighborhood community. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the survey and agreed that it did meet those criteria. Part of the process of looking at the history of the neighborhood is to develop a period of significance so that we can say homes within this period have a different type of significance than homes that might have been built after that. The area really started developing in 1926, so that gives us our opening date for the significance period. And by 1948, all kind of reference to the Rossmoyn Village area and to Royal Boulevard as a separate special entity kind of ended. In the 20s, it started out with the idea that it was gonna become a Spanish village, full of Spanish houses. The depression kicked in. Everything went haywire with development in Glendale during that period. And by the time we get to the 30s, we started having other infill coming in on the vacant lots that were never developed with various revival styles. And I'll show you some pictures of those in a couple of seconds. The survey found that 22 of the 30 properties was constructed within the period of significance and that their condition still retained enough historic fabric to really tell the story of the house from that period. And one of the important things in a historic district is to distinguish between a contributing property and a non-contributing property. And the guidelines have been written to kind of have a special level of review for a contributing property versus a non-contributing. And that leaves eight properties that we would consider non-contributing. Here's the map with the contributors highlighted in red. 73% are contributors. And the ordinance requires only that 60% of the grouping be a contributor. So we more than meet that standard. And here are just a few examples. These are some of the early houses that show the kind of Spanish village concept that was proposed. Both of these houses are contributors. Both of these houses are contributors. These two are interesting because they're also individually listed on the Glendale Register. The upper house was the home of, the boyhood home of the founder of Bob's Big Boy. And the lower is the Ed Strangler Lewis House. World, world champion wrestler for many years who ended up living in Glendale, running a business here and becoming a real local character for a few years. And starting in the 30s, we started having other styles coming in. So these are, this is an example of some of the Tudor revival that came in. And then an American Colonial revival at the top, a French revival at the bottom. So we have what's pretty much a typical development period for some of the higher end residential communities in Glendale and also throughout Southern California, where you have this mix of period revival styles that kind of blend together because their massing is similar and they have similar attributes on the street. Here are two examples of non-contributors. I chose the top one because that house is completely more, as far as I know, it's intact from the time it was built, but it was built outside of the period of significance. So it was built after 1948. The lower house has significant alterations that even if it had been built in the period of significance, those alterations that you see on the right would kind of remove enough of its historic character that it wouldn't be a contributor any longer. And this is typical of a historic district to have non-contributors interspersed among the contributors. The idea is that there can't be too many of them, so. Just bringing you up to date, I think I've mentioned a few of these things. We did receive a petition from the proponents of the district officially requesting the zone change. 23, the owners of 23 homes out of the 30 in the district signed, so that's 77%. You should also know that there was an opposition petition that was submitted in May of 2007, originally signed by nine homeowners. Two of those have since rescinded their opposition and now support the district and sign the supporting petition. One of those homeowners has moved out of the neighborhood. And the person who moved into their house is also a supporter of the district. So there are actually six opponents officially on record to this district. I'm sure you're familiar, under the city charter for a zone change, because we, these six, I'm sorry, these nine homeowners or the homes have over 20% of the street frontage in the entire district. This is gonna require a five-five vote at city council when they're approving the zone, when they're considering the zone change. When the Historic Preservation Commission saw this at the end of July, just last week, they voted unanimously to recommend the zone change to city council. And unless you have any questions, that's everything.
I do have a question.
Mr. Torgerson.
On the rule that if 20% of the foot, frontage in the area is opposed to it, you calculated that based on nine homes and now you say that three of them are no longer opponents, so it should be recalculated based on six homes. And is the answer, does that still give you 20%?
According to the city attorney, because we still have a petition on record, we have to go back to that petition with the nine.
The original petition?
I've done the calculation for the six versus the nine and regardless, it's over 20%. Several of the opponents have very long street frontages, they're corner lots. One of them actually fronts onto three different streets, so.
Okay, thank you.
What is the effect of having once property designated as part of a historical area?
Basically, the design review shifts over to the Historic Preservation Commission because we've identified the neighborhood as a historic district that stands apart from other portions of Glendale. The idea, coming from the homeowners actually, is that we want to make sure that any changes don't affect the overall historic character of either an individual house or kind of the ensemble of houses in the district. So the guidelines are very specific about, you know, what sorts of changes are appropriate, what should be avoided. And it's also important to remember that the guidelines and our regulation in the historic district applies only to the things that can be seen from the street. So even if we have historic features on the back of a house, which may be beautiful, which we may want to preserve forever, if a homeowner came and said, I'm taking this stained glass window out, we'd have to say that's fine because we can't see it from the street.
But the non-contributing homes, what do they have to? Because I understand that their level of scrutiny is lower.
Yeah. Could you ask for that? Basically, the guidelines for non-contributors are gonna try to maintain them as they are to the greatest degree possible or possibly to bring back historic features that may have been removed. But there isn't going to be as much attention to the materials that are used. If they came to us with a window replacement program for the front facade, we would definitely be more lenient about alternative window materials or something for a non-contributor than we would for a contributor. If they came to us for a large second story addition, we'd definitely start thinking in terms of how it relates to the massing and the character and the context, so.
I have some questions as well. One of which is how the sort of period dates are established and where the 1948 cutoff, how that was determined. Recognize that starting in 1949, there are houses built in 1950, 51. Those are considered non-contributors. And is it because they weren't in the style that they were, that the date was set prior to their destruction?
It's primarily, when you're trying to justify the period of significance, usually, starting date's often easier than the ending date. So '26, we know the company that started this development area began construction, began the subdivision of the lots and the sales. In 1948, that's the last time we have any record that Rossmoyn Village, Inc., which was one of the successor firms, I think there were three firms from 1926 through 48 that were actually involved in the development. That's the last time it was actively marketed as this is part of Rossmoyn Village. This is a special kind of unit within this other kind of development parcel. And anything that was built after that was basically infill. There were still open lots on these few blocks and it was infill. For the most part, the work that was done is in different styles. We have more of the minimal, traditional and a couple of kind of sort of quasi-modern looking houses. But the real division is based on, you know, the marketing and the intent of the district kind of ending at that point.
Okay. And the, the, those who were opposed, how many of those are contributors and how many non-contributors?
You know, I actually don't have that number. Can I find that for you? This is several, several of the opponents, some of the finest architectural examples are owned by people who are in opposition, but I don't have the number. Just to remind you that this, the fact that there is an opposition petition really is only germane to city council. It's for your background information, but...
Right, that's helpful for us to consider what their arguments were as well.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And I recognize this is the first time we've gone through this process, and it's taken us a long time, having been on this commission now for almost six years and saw historic, uh, overlay zone rules developed. I recognize that we're all sort of feeling our way through this process. I think for future commissions, it would be useful to actually have copies of the petition for, and if there is a petition against, as part of our package, just to have as review materials in terms of background. But I, that said, I think it's, I think it's a great application, and I don't see any reason why I wouldn't support it. Continue to ask questions.
All right. Unless there's anything else, we may as well open the public hearing portion of it, or continue with that, I guess I should say. I have two speaker cards. The first one is Elaine Wilkerson.
My name is Elaine Wilkerson. I live on Royal Boulevard, and I'm one of the two applicants for this application for historic district. And the other applicant is Carol Mary. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here. She's one of my neighbors, and she's a great supporter, too. And our purpose tonight is to encourage you to unanimously support this recommendation of staff and to recommend to council to rezone this area for historic district. And the reason I hope it's unanimous is because, as you've heard, council has to vote five-zero in support to have it carry. The question you asked, Commissioner Gerald, the protesters, the six, four of them are contributors. And I also wanted to mention in that regard that Michael Kelly, who was one of the previous owners, who was one of the two families that started the protest, sent a letter June twenty-six to all the owners of the Royal Boulevard homes in this, and I just wanted to read a couple of things, I hope he doesn't mind, a couple of things to you. He talks about his perspective in opposing it, and he says, "A year later, in the process of selling my home and finding a suitable rental in the area, I've noticed these things, which have made me change my mind about the historic district overlay. I've seen the mansionization of neighborhoods in the woodlands in Rossmoyn area. Heavens, you don't need to go much further than up Royal to see what our design review board has approved. During the course of opening my house to prospective buyers, I heard many disturbing ideas on what people want to do with my home if they bought it. The most egregious was to tear it down and start over." And he ends off, "I believe that the historic district overlay will be of great benefit to the homeowners and the homes of Royal Boulevard." I'm going to give that.
Thank you.
I particularly thought that was important because he was so adamantly opposed, and now he's a very big supporter. And in closing, I'd just like to say that I think this is very important as a first step for the city in historic districts. Hopefully, it will not be the last historic district, it'll be first of many. And I think it's of great benefit to the community where there are homes of this quality and character because the design guidelines that the city did were so vastly more detailed than the guidelines available for other neighborhoods. And they give so much certainty to someone who wants to propose a change, a second story even, on a non-contributor, or perhaps on a contributor. But you suddenly find yourself in a position where you have options shown to you and the details of the guidelines so that you know before you come to the Historic Preservation Commission for approval of your design what would be and wouldn't be appropriate, so that you can invest your efforts and your heart into changes that you have a pretty good certainty of success on. Whereas, when you're in other neighborhoods, you really don't know what is expected of you. And I think that is, is one of the reasons that many people in the neighborhood think it's wonderful, because they have certainty of what their neighbors will do and what they can do. And that certainty, of course, is something that people like in stable neighborhoods. And ours is pretty stable right now. And I'd like to close by saying we've really appreciated the staff's support in providing information and providing opportunities for people to interact on this application. It's been a long process, and Jay particularly has been wonderful, and people in the public meetings get up and give testimonies to Jay Platt because he has been so thoughtful and patient with the members of the community. There are thirty families live in these homes, and I can tell you that they all love their homes very much, and we all think very highly of the neighborhood and would like to see it continue as a great neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. And then the final card I have is from Greg Grammar.
Thank you, Greg Grammar. I'm a resident at, on Royal Boulevard, and I live in one of the twenty-two contributing homes on the street. And I'm here just to speak in favor of the establishment of the historic district for Royal Boulevard and to encourage you to approve the staff recommendation. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Glendale Historical Society, and I've got a letter that our president, Arlene, had submitted to the Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know if it was included in your packet, and I'd just like to read a portion of it. "The Glendale Historical Society enthusiastically supports giving a strong recommendation to City Council to unanimously approve the designation of a historic district overlay zone on Royal Boulevard. We are very proud of what Royal Boulevard has accomplished for Glendale and feel that this is an important step. This important step paves the way for other neighborhoods to pursue historic district status. Period residential architecture along Royal Boulevard deserves nothing less than our full protection, and the residents who have worked so long and hard on this process, paying full attention to all requirements and details along the way, are on the way to achieving a milestone that Glendale residents, current and future, can and will appreciate." I'd like to.
All right. Thank you very much.
And then just lastly, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration.
I actually have a question if no one else does. Did you know before this process started that, I believe, was your residence at the McCall's Home of the Month?
Yes. I, actually, I found that out as I was getting further along in this process and actually have been able to locate the actual magazine that it was featured in nineteen thirty-six.
Fun fact.
So, yeah. Good thing for eBay.
Yeah. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I have no other speaker cards. Comments, questions, are there inquiries from the commissioners?
I want to just comment that I think this is an historic point in the history of the city of Glendale, just given that it's, we've not had historic district overlay zone come before us before. We've worked hard to create the rules, and I have to commend the people of Royal Canyon or Royal Boulevard for having worked through the process and been the first to come out and work through details that probably weren't addressed in the original zoning changes that we adopted to create the districts themselves. The first ones out are always the testbed cases, and it's always interesting and difficult to try to move through that process. So, I congratulate them for their tenaciousness and diligence to move this forward. I think this is a great application, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Anyone else would like to say something?
Have a comment?
Mr. Torgerson.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this as well, having been through endless meetings on how to do historic overlay districts in the first place over the last five years. As Mr. Gerald said, this is the first one that's come through. I found the package that you gave us to be very complete, with the exception of the dissenting opinions. It would have been nice to have seen those. I specifically wanted to mention the Royal Boulevard Historic Resources Survey done by the Historic Resources Group in Hollywood. It was basically the history of the area, and it was extremely well-written, I thought, and extremely well-researched, documented, a lot of terrific details. It's actually a keeper that I'll put in my file.
Yeah, we're very happy with it.
And if we can continue to have the same quality in the future, that's going to make things a lot easier to go through these redistricting hearings. So, that's all I have.
Just one quick comment. I'm new to the commission, so the process is new to me. I'm in total support of it. I, I'm pleased and happy to see that we're doing these kind of things in the city, and it would be a shame that we, if we didn't, and to see something happen, happen in that district that would not keep it looking the way it is and keep the same atmosphere around there. So, it's a very special area, and I think this process is a great trend.
The only things I would add, pretty much echo Commissioner Torgerson. I think it's very important, especially when you know that council needs to go to five, or five-zero, that the dissenting opinions are made known, that they're vetted, that the rebuttals, that the understanding of what's causing that dissension is felt. Because if you're going to get a hundred percent from council, you've got to truly address all facets of it, and we don't really see that in our package.
For the record, this meeting was noticed, and both this meeting and the Preservation Commission meeting were noticed to all residents, including opponents, of course. And neither meeting has any opponent chosen to come.
I understand that, but we're advisory, and at some point, when it gets to, I would be very surprised if opponents don't show up at City Council. If you're not prepared for it, it's, it could be a very unpleasant meeting in terms of, for the proponents. So, just be prepared, have your ducks in a row.
Thank you.
Everything you've done, the report is superb. Very informative, it was great reading. It taught me a lot about, you know, a community I've only been in for ten or fifteen years. I do have to steal a humorous line that Mr. Torgerson came up with, that it's interesting that a lot of this was based on the subprime mortgage crisis of eighteen fifty or so, where, where Mr. Verdugo basically took a subprime loan out, apparently. So, but other than that, great report, very informative, and just really gung-ho that we're starting to see this type of, of process in the city. Unless there's other observations or comments, I would recommend a motion.
Here's my motion in this package.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
I don't know what the product of the meeting is supposed to be.
Just a recommendation to council.
I would move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval, unanimous approval of proposed ordinance, PZON two thousand and seven dash zero zero six.
Have a motion support. Would you please call roll.
Commissioner Shit.
Aye.
Commissioner Torgerson.
Aye.
Commissioner Gerald.
Aye.
Commissioner Manocia.
Aye.
And Chair K.
Aye. On a unanimous five to zero vote, the Planning Commission does recommend establishment of a historic district overlay zone for the proposed Royal Boulevard Historic District. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight-B. It's tenet track map five-three-five-one-eight. It's twenty-seven oh nine Piedmont Avenue. It's a request for time extension of an approved tenet track map to construct twenty new condominium units, thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight square foot lot, and the R sixteen fifty medium-high-density residential zone.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the only thing I'd add to the staff report is that I inspected the site today. It's very near to completion. Virtually all of the conditions pertinent to the map, the design review, and the variance are complete. There are some street trees, they still need to be installed. I've checked with the other departments, they do not have any new or revised comments or need to change anything relative to the map. So, I would expect actually for the final map to be approved by the city within days, if not weeks.
All right. Any initial questions for staff?
I guess, given that and given the governor's signature on legislation, is this a necessary action?
Mr. Garcia?
When was the map approved?
Two thousand and five, no, that was, you know, the tenet track was June thirteenth, two thousand and five.
I'm just trying to recall the legislation. I think it only applied to legis, to maps that were, the automatic extension only applies to maps that were approved after July fifteenth, two thousand and five. So, you might want to just, if you want to give them the one year, just approve it just for specification.
Missed that date?
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff at this moment? All right. I do have one speaker card. It's Karen Igoian.
Hi, my name is Karen Igoian. I am a resident of twenty-seven thirty-five Piedmont Avenue, which is one of three buildings of townhomes in the Piedmont Pine Complex, which is adjacent to the twenty-seven oh nine Piedmont condominium project. I am here only because I represent twenty-four units in these three buildings as a member of the Board of Directors. We have, well, our property manager that represents Piedmont Pines has attended a meeting previously and was promised that there is, the gap in the wall, between the wall along our driveway and a new wall that was constructed on that property would be filled in. And it has been my understanding that the gap has been flagged by the city and should be filled in, as well as any waterproofing that's necessary to prevent the water seepage through our wall by their irrigation or drains, or whenever it rains, because we have some problems with mold and moisture. I just wanted to make sure that these items are included when the commission evaluates the needs to, for the permit extension and is a part of the construction site plan. Now that the condominium buildings appear to have been completed, there have been open houses and showing the units. Our driveway again has not been, our wall has not been sealed from their side, and the gap between the two walls has not been filled in. So, of course, it hasn't rained for some time, but whenever it did, or sometimes even from watering, moisture seeps through our wall, causing a buildup of mold and discoloration. And also, some of the cement caps that were on our wall have been, you know, knocked off, and a few cement blocks have been damaged, but that's minor. Our concern is mainly that the gap between the wall fills with water, leaves dirt, garbage, attracting bugs and lumen, and it should be capped off so that there, there is no opening there. And there was an attempt to do something, someone had put aluminum sheeting, trying to cover the open spaces, but that was really not acceptable. It was pretty ugly and did not really do much for the aesthetics of anything. So, that is my reason for being here, so thank you very much.
All right. Let me ask staff, are you aware of any conditions that's certainly not part of our track map? Do you happen to be aware, any conditions that building and safety put on the permit as it relates to the adjacent property?
No, but my thinking is that some of these features that the lady has asked for may, and only, I'm only saying may, be incorporated as part of the building permit process, or perhaps part of the, well, it wouldn't be the grading, but perhaps part of the building permit process. The only thing close in any of the conditions or mitigation measures is condition five from the variance, which says that if any buildings, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, fencing, or landscape areas, et cetera, adjacent to the site are damaged during the course of construction on public or private property, the damage shall be repaired to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator for private property and the director of public works for public property. There's nothing here about waterproofing the wall, there's nothing in the conditions about filling the gap between two walls. It doesn't necessarily sound like a bad idea to me as a layman, but again, that might be something that would be handled by the building department through building plan check, but I'm not fundamentally sure. It's not currently a condition of the map or any other public discretionary approvals.
Are I taking your condominiums? You live in a condominium project?
Uh, yes, a condominium.
That's, that's all I need to know. It's not apartment, it is condominium. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I would just suggest that that probably, the things that you are raising doesn't really work in terms of a track map process, and your concern should be in writing and should be presented to the building department so that the code enforcement people can take a look of what was on the plans and/or if something should be on the plans and work through it that way.
I'd do it. I'd do it immediately.
I mean, it doesn't sound like they have a certificate of occupancy yet, but that would be a nice time to trigger it. Maybe it'll cause some quicker reaction when they know that they're trying to, you know, get some sort of certificate.
Mr. Chair, members of the board and the public, they may have a certificate of occupancy as an apartment building, they just may not be able to, because typically what, what these are in the past is they get a permit to build as an apartment building, and then they ask for the map subsequently. I, I'm not going to, I don't want to guarantee that they don't have a certificate to operate maybe as an apartment. They probably don't. They probably don't.
They may not. They may have a temporary, they may have the permanent, but I doubt that.
Right.
Especially if, you know, nobody's occupying yet. So, I would just suggest, you know, your concern should best be addressed to building and safety. We appreciate that you shared them with us, but it, that's something we can really, I think, act to as far as this particular process.
Any other comments?
Any other comments from Commissioners? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion, of course.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I found the motion. Ah! Upon consideration of a time extension request for Tenanted Track Map Number 53518, approval of said map... Track map is hereby extended, like the motion, make the motion that the map is hereby extended for a period of time not to exceed one year until June 13th, two thousand nine. And we make the following findings of fact, that the extension is authorized by the appropriate section in the Glendale Municipal Code and the California Government Code, that the findings made by the Planning Commission and its decision of June 13th, two thousand five remain applicable. And the conditions in the neighborhood of the Tenanted Track Map, 53518, have not changed to warrant reconsideration of the original approval.
We have a motion searching support.
Second.
Motion with a second, please call roll.
Commissioner Shitts.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner Giraud.
Aye.
Commissioner Manoukian.
Aye.
And Chair Kane.
Aye, on a vote of five to zero, Tenanted Track Map 53518 has been granted the requested time extension. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8C. It is Tenanted Track Map 70486. It's 341 through 345 West California Avenue. It's a request to subdivide a proposed new three-story multifamily development consisting of eleven condominium units over semi-subterranean garage in the R1250 high-density residential zone. The applicant is CNC Courtyard. Staff is recommended... Recommended... Staff is represented by Chris Bagdikian, and it is a motion to approve a negative deck and to approve the Tenanted Track Map.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners, this is a request to subdivide a new three-story, eleven-unit residential building into airspace condominium units. And the building is built over a semi-subterranean garage, and the units are a mix of plan-three bedroom units. This project was reviewed by the Design Review Board and approved by the Design Review Board. As of the writing of the report, a building permit hadn't been issued at that time. As part of the Design Review Board's review, there was a mitigated negative declaration that was adopted by the Design Review Board. There was one mitigation measure in that mitigated neg... Deck, and that was to provide a noise study so that the noise issues could be mitigated, and that was done. The noise study was submitted as part of the track map, and it appears that the noise can be mitigated to an acceptable level. As appeared in the staff report, as stated in the staff report, the building meets all zoning standards, as well as the various elements of the general plan, and the analysis is in the staff report. Having said all this, staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve, to acknowledge the mitigated negative declaration and approve the Tenanted Track Map subject to the conditions that are listed in the staff report and in the motion. I would like to wrap up my presentation. The plans are on the board in the center. The track map, land use map, and zoning map, as well as the photographs of the site, they are in the center of the panel. I would like to wrap up my presentation unless there are questions from the Commission. The project applicant is in the audience.
Let's check. Questions from the Commissioners initially for staff? I see or hear none. I have one speaker card. It's Serge Adamiyan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Serge Adamiyan. I'm a track engineer representing the applicant, and we don't have any comments with the conditions. They're fine with this.
Questions for the speaker? See none, thank you, sir. Anything for staff to add?
Nothing.
It looks like we have a speaker or a Commissioner question. Could you wait a moment, Mr. Ferguson?
I think I'm going to withdraw my...
Your finger.
Answering my own question.
All right. If there are no comments, could we have a first motion on the negative deck, followed by a motion on the Tenanted Track Map? See, it's controversial, nobody wants to have their name attached to the motion.
Still looking.
We're looking for a motion, is what's happening.
Actually, I believe you just need to acknowledge the environmental... I believe the DRB formally adopted it when they originally approved the project.
Well, we have to... Well, since we have to... A motion to approve the negative deck, so we're just operating on what the agenda said.
I do have a question.
Yeah, but... I mean, at the end of the day, if it has been approved already by DRB, they can't reapprove it.
So we can acknowledge it in court.
Acknowledge it as part of your motion.
Okay, fine. Thank you for correcting that. We still have no motion.
I do have a question.
Are you on it? Very good, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please. You certainly can.
The chronology of this is a little confusing to me. The DRB approved it, they pulled permits, they started building, then they got this acoustic study done, and then in the acoustic study, as part of the mitigated negative declaration, the acoustic study recommends specific floor and wall treatment, construction treatments in here. Were those actually applied to reconstruction, or...
That, I don't know. I was not involved in the initial processing of this application. I don't know why the noise study was not done initially with the design review portion. However, if this track map is approved, those measures would have to be implemented, whether it's during construction or post-construction. The track map cannot be final unless those measures are implemented.
And how is that enforced?
Through the building permit process and field inspections. And then subsequently, the acoustic engineer will have to certify that the noise levels are met.
Where is that brought into this process in terms of a condition attached to the motion, or... I mean, you're saying it's required, but where is the trigger that requires it?
It's the 2007 noise element.
Did I miss it?
There might be a couple of reasons why. Either the noise element was adopted after this MND was adopted, or it's a requirement for subdivision. But actually, I'm looking at the mitigation measure for this project that was attached to the MND when it was approved, and it says the noise study shall be completed prior to additions of permits. I'm not sure if that occurred at that time. And then it says any conditions of approval or mitigation measures outlined in the noise study require it to achieve, except the laws shall be fully implemented. So that's the enforcement mechanism right there.
All right, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Motion, please.
I would move to acknowledge and recognize the mitigated negative declaration prepared and to state that upon consideration of Tenanted Track Number 70486 at 341 to 345 West California Avenue, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said Tenanted Track, that said Tenanted Track Number 70486 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the Subdivision Map Act and the conditions listed in the motion. Through... How many conditions do we have? We have a good twenty-four conditions. And that's how I would move.
Then I would second that.
A motion and support, please call roll.
Commissioner Shitts.
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Aye.
Commissioner Giraud.
Aye.
Commissioner Manoukian.
Aye.
And Chair Kane.
Aye, on a vote of five to zero, Tenanted Track Map 70486 has been approved and the negative deck was recognized. Moving on to Agenda Item 8D, Special Recreation Zone Review. Location is 2220 Fern Lane. It's a portion of Lot 204, 205, and 206, Track Number 9088. It's a request to construct a new unmanned wireless telecommunications facility consisting of a thirty-five-foot-tall, slimline light standard and radio equipment cabinets located behind a block wall enclosure. Antennas would be hidden with the light standard. The applicant's Royal Street Communications, and we again have Mr. Baghdini in... Excuse me, up for staff, and the recommendation is a motion to approve the negative deck and the request for the unmanned wireless telecommunications facility.
Yes, Chairman Kane and Planning Commissioners, this project occurs in the SR zone, which is the special recreation zone, and the Planning Commission has authority to review the application and make a decision. The proposal is to establish a wireless telecommunications facility. I would like to point out one thing, if Mr. Chairman Kane is looking at the plans, the green highlights do not indicate the entire site. The site is a tiny portion within the green highlighted area, if I may point it out. If we can start with the aerial photo that's on the screen, I'm pointing to the two freeway going north. This is the sports complex. This is Fern Lane, going under the freeway. There's a fire road that's up here, that's Fern Lane also, part of Fern Lane. It's a gated fire road, there's a gate here. Along this fire road, the site is somewhere in this area here. And the equipment, the proposed equipment enclosure would be located on that site, and the antenna would be located across Fern Lane along the freeway, somewhere in here. Maybe I can enlarge this a little further. So this is Fern Lane. The site is somewhere in here, that's where the equipment is going to be located, and the antenna across Fern Lane on the freeway side. As you can see, there is not much development around the site. One issue that comes to mind with respect to this property is that part of the property is located in a secondary ridge line area. That's the eastern part of the property. Let me point out on the map where things are located. This is Fern Lane, the fire road. The sports complex will be down here. There's a gate here, and it's a gated fire road. This is the parcel that is the subject of today's review. The area where the equipment is going to be located is a twenty-foot-by-fourteen-foot area, roughly. And there's going to be a trench or utility connection, and the antenna is going to be located across Fern Lane on the freeway side.
It's going under the street.
Under the street. So this is the construction area, including there's a power pole somewhere here where the power is going to be taken from. No water is proposed for this, for the operation. So the ridge line area that's identified on our ridge line maps and other maps stops somewhere on the eastern half of the property. So the western portion of the property where the construction is going to take place is not affected by the ridge line. So I wanted to point this out.
Not only be up on the ridge line, it's below the ridge line.
It's way below the ridge line, next to the road. And along this road, there are other telecommunications facilities, one of which is represented in the photographs here. And there's another antenna pole, which is going to be like a light standard that's existing on the property or nearby, and the proposal is going to be similar to the existing. So it's in appearance going to be like a two-foot diameter light standard with a light on it.
Illuminating what? Illuminating in which direction?
Well, this one doesn't have a light on it, but this one's... The proposed one is going to have a light on it, illuminating like a street light. There are other street lights in the area, so it's going to illuminate the fire road.
Is it going to illuminate the fire road or the freeway?
The fire road.
Is the height of this less greater than or the same as the...
It's similar to the existing.
How similar?
Thirty-five feet. The proposed is thirty-five.
No, I understand the proposed is thirty-five, so where are the existing?
I don't know the exact height, but in appearance, in the photo simulations, they are similar. We have photo simulations here. So this gives you the location of the site. This is a... This is more of a detail. The entire green area is not the site. The site actually... The entire property is here, and the construction area is here. The green does not indicate the entire construction. Same on this one. And these are the details of the equipment enclosure and the light standard.
And who owns the property currently?
The city owns the property, and the construction area is being leased from the city.
Now, do you know how the value of the property was established in terms of the lease?
No, I'm not familiar with the details of the lease, the financial arrangements.
Who... What department in the city does that?
The Parks and Recreation, in this case, is involved in it.
All right. Any... Anything else you want to add?
I was going to go over the highlights in the staff report. The first one is the equipment enclosure. It's going to be a masonry, nine-foot-tall enclosure, painted or with a color that is muted that matches the hillside.
We're the Design Review Board for this, right?
You are the decision-makers on this. The second is the antenna. It's going to be a thirty-five-foot pole with the antennas hidden inside the pole, and in appearance, the pole is going to appear like a light standard. With respect to the lighting, the lighting will be contained to the roadway and not spill over the property or adjacent properties. And utilities, I mentioned, there's going to be power taken from a power pole nearby. Power to the light standard will be clenched under the roadway, and there's no water necessary to operate the facility. Having said this, staff is recommending approval of the project, first, adoption of the environmental negative declaration, and approval of the project with a number of conditions listed in the staff report and in the motion. There are eight conditions listed. I would like to conclude my presentation. A representative of the applicant is in the audience for further questions.
Please. I'm wondering if you can discuss a little bit what fire mitigation techniques are being used in this construction, having that whole area burned up from the College Hills Fire fifteen years ago. I'd like to know more about the fire mitigation. I know the fire department's going to come in and make a clear brush. Are there any other fire hazards associated with this? There's no water. Of course, you wouldn't use an electrical fire. Has anyone addressed the environmental effects and the fire hazards possible for battery and electronics equipment in this?
Typically, they ask for brush clearance periodically, but as you can see from the pictures, and I've been out there, there are other facilities and...
Only considering this one, though.
There is vegetation right up to the walls of the enclosure. The fire department, once a year, requests clearance of the brush.
Would that be just a tag? Would that be the responsibility of the city because it's our property, or would that be the responsibility of the applicant to clear that way?
I'm not exactly sure whose responsibility it is, but as part of obtaining a permit to establish this, the fire department will have conditions.
Do you have any knowledge of those?
They will provide a key to the lockbox to the gate, and they will make those arrangements during the permitting process.
Okay.
Don't speak unless you're at the mic.
I guess they can't hear you.
Well, you can speak, but we're not going to pay any attention to you. If you'd like to speak, you can, but I will want you to fill out one of the pink sheets when you're done, and then identify yourself for now.
Good evening, my name is Patty Mahia, representing Royal Street Communications, and the equipment, to answer your question, is fire-rated, so everything is self-contained in the equipment cabinet. All the electronics are contained in the equipment cabinets.
And the equipment... So if it all caught on fire, it would be contained within the equipment cabinet?
Well, I guess it's saying it's not likely that something will, you know, if something were to spark on the outside of the cabinet, that it would affect the equipment on the inside.
Well, my concern is something sparking on the inside in the equipment catching the brush. brush on the outside on fire.
Right. We've never really had any special conditions placed on us by any other fire department, so it hasn't seemed to be an issue.
Oh, so now you're challenging us.
I'm just speaking from our, you know, experience, but we're, you know, open to whatever conditions the fire department might impose.
How many, how many of your facilities have caught, had fires in near proximity to?
None that I know of.
No brush fires caused by your equipment?
No. Just to add, we did work very closely with the Department of Recreation on the design and location of this facility. So it is designed to be consistent with some of the other existing telecommunications facilities out there. It is the same height at thirty-five feet. The equipment enclosure is the same as an existing facility out there as well.
Okay. What is the block wall? I mean, I know it's masonry.
Yeah.
Is it colored black, colored mortar? You're not going to rely on paint, are you?
No, I believe it is just regular cement block wall.
Well, there you go.
Sort of topish grayish.
Not anymore. Maybe.
Okay. They were very, yeah. Again, that was, you know, at the request of the Department of Recreation to have it that color. But we're open to whatever color the commission decides it likes.
It was not possible to go visit the site, so that's one of the reasons we're asking some of these questions is hard to do a site visit when you have no access to the property.
The property is accessible.
Thought there was a locked gate on Fern.
It's typically left open. When I drove by, it's typically left open.
I saw on the plan, there's a gate, so I didn't even drive by.
Yeah.
My fault.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much on that.
If I may, if may I address the, the block wall question?
Well, I guess it would come to me, actually.
In, in the plans, the equipment enclosure is shown to be made of cement masonry units, but it, it has to be decorative because of the zone and the location. And there's a condition, number six actually, that requires to be, the equipment enclosure to be made of decorative masonry and they call, with a color to match the hillside. Decorative masonry would be split face, cement blocks, for instance, or a stone veneer.
Any other comments or questions? I guess I have one in, in, go ahead.
I have some general questions that maybe wouldn't be appropriate relative to this, but I, just looking at the pictures here and I see some of these units. In fact, I was quite responsible for placing one or two of these from the Parks Commission, but I noticed the one unit, it looks like it's falling apart. It's one of the existing units, like it's opened the top or has exposed wires. Is there, is that a problem? Is that just a different type? Or could that happen to the unit that's going in? Is there a way that opens up and exposes?
No, I don't, I don't know what the story is behind that one.
You know the one I mean. You can see it from the freeway, so that's why I was looking for it, his.
We are, we are pursuing some of those because they have, they've had conditional use permits. For instance, if they're no longer active, we're pursuing those.
So that wouldn't happen with this unit?
As long as it's in operation, it should be fine.
The other questions are general and this probably isn't the right time, but I'm wondering how many of these we're going to get in this small spot because it seems where they're all landing. And are we going to have standards relative to the one that looks like it's falling apart and we're putting one right next to it that's a light standard? And how many, how many of them we'll put in? But I know that doesn't relate to this, so I'll just hold off on that and find a better time to speak there. And I, and I guess my question around that was who's purview would it be to ask those questions, to set those standards? Would that be planning or would that be Parks and Recreation? Does anybody know?
Or engineering?
Actually, the, the planning commission has authority over that. If in the planning commission's opinion, there are too many of these antennas, the planning commission can vote against the project.
Okay. I just, I remember when the first one went in, so it looks like there's a lot more up there now. I just wondered if we've unleashed the monster or some control might, might need to be put on it, but I'd like to say.
On some degree physics and the monster.
I understand that.
Locate these things in the right place with coverage, but.
That, that's not our problem.
Well, but I am concerned about if we, if these things have deferred maintenance, shall we say? Somebody should be keeping track of it.
We are actually, we are, the, the, the old ones have conditional use permits and we're pursuing them in case they're abandoned or whatever the situation may be.
I think we should just learn from our experience. If they, those kind of things happen, then we need to take that in consideration when we plan for future, future, future opportunities or requests.
What's the duration of the lease with the city? You up and a no?
I don't have the specifics of the lease, but they're typically twenty to thirty years.
Any other comments, questions for staff? I guess I have a couple of observations. On the motion, I don't see how we can include number three since there was no approved material or color exhibit presented. So we should strike that if we do indeed have a motion. On six, I, I would just note that they do include the concept of decorative masonry block color to match. I would suggest that that should be split face and that the mortar should match the Have any exposed metal, and I would suggest we add a condition that any exposed metals, any corrosive steel metals be galvanized so we don't get a bunch of things rusting out in a couple of years. And I would also suggest maybe we add a condition that says brush maintenance, if not addressed in the lease with the city, will be the responsibility of the applicant. Thoughts, gentlemen? Comments?
Good upgrade.
I guess just maybe a request for clarification on that last comment. Mr. Chair, the brush maintenance of what area?
To the satisfaction of the fire department in the area around their facility. I mean, I understand the city owns the property, but if they don't address it in the lease, let's make that, rather than having the city having to maintain their facility, let's put it on their shoulders since it's their facility.
Okay. The only thing I'd add or maybe suggest is that unless the lease has specifically already addressed it.
That's what, that was the first statement I said, is if it's not addressed in the lease, then the applicant needs to maintain the brush around their facility to the satisfaction of the fire department.
Okay. In the immediate area around?
Yeah, okay. Immediate area. Proximity area.
The area, so that the little building caught on fire, we'd all just sit back and watch and go, that's interesting, not evacuation neighborhood.
Whatever that distance is. What are your thoughts about the suggested revisions to the motion? Any other ideas that anyone had, concerns?
Well, what do we do about number three, since we didn't have approved materials and color?
Well.
As we're acting as the design review board.
Right. Fundamentally, it's a block wall.
Yeah. And it should be brown.
Metal telephone pole.
Should be metal.
Metal color. Well said.
As opposed to the pine tree or fake palm tree that are the other options.
Yes, sir. If I may, one, one thing the design review board does to sometimes resolve issues after their hearings is to leave it to the discretion of the city's urban designer. Or you could leave it to the discretion of the Parks Director.
Good. So we could say number three, you could say project shall be in substantial conformance with the desires of the urban planner.
Yeah. I much prefer the urban planner.
Urban designer.
Urban designer. Thank you. As opposed to the chess park people. And once again, I question any political aspirations I might have.
I thought I'd date him up.
All right. Any other comments? Any other suggestions from staff? All right. So gentlemen, shall we have a motion from someone, please?
I move the, I have to read this. Should I read that with a big real quick?
And then you can reference the things below it just by number and then any of the revisions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just, I just had a question. Mr. Begdeken, Chris, is there, the, the neg deck needs to be approved as well by, by the planning commission? So you need to do that first. I don't think they have a motion as part of the package, so all you, all you need to do is make a motion to approve the neg deck inclusive of a finding that there's no substantial evidence supporting a fair argument that there will be significant impact on the environment.
Okay. If you want to craft that, we'll, I'll ask somebody on the left side to start the motion on the negative deck.
Oh, that's a good point.
If you want to craft the other part.
We were crafting the other part.
Yeah, we were crafting.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Would one of you, would one of you, would one of you left this?
I would, I would move that the negative declaration inclusive of other findings be, be adopted.
Support. We have motion support for the negative deck. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Shitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torjason.
Aye.
Commissioner Jarrow.
Aye.
Commissioner Manukian.
Aye.
And Chair King.
Okay. Aye on a vote of five to zero. The negative deck has been approved and we'll now await the motion for the unmanned wireless telecommunications facility.
I move that upon consideration of the special recreation development review plan and after having reviewed and considered all materials exhibits submitted with regard to said proposal to construct a new unmanned wireless telecommunications facility assisting with thirty-five foot tall slim light standard and radio equipment cabinets placed behind the block wall enclosure of two hundred and eighty square feet and located within the special recreation zone, subject to compliance of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and following conditions which are nine now. And the changes to, I know item three was changed, but I don't know, item three at the discretion, we want to add at the discretion of the urban planner?
Designer.
Urban designer. An item nine, that the brush will be, brush clearance will be the responsibility of the applicant?
Unless addressed otherwise in the lease agreement with the city.
Okay. Like that. Were there any other change? I think those, which was the other?
Item ten, all corrodest metals to be used on project be galvanized. Exposed corrodest.
Okay. With those changes and those ten items listed below, and the planning commission hereby takes, makes each and all of the following findings a fact. I read those.
That's not necessary. I don't believe. Just, just note the A and B is prepared by staff.
And any other, just kind of helping out here, a little addition to the motion might be what the case number is or the PEIF two thousand eight dash zero three?
It's actually PSR two thousand eight zero zero one.
Yeah, there's no reference of it anywhere in the motion, so.
PSR two thousand eight and it's the first one. So it's zero one or zero zero one? Zero zero one. Twenty ones. How many zeros?
Right?
Right. So moved. So moved.
And I will second it.
As stated.
We have a motion and support. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Shitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torjason.
Aye.
Commissioner Jarrow.
Aye.
Commissioner Manukian.
Aye.
And Chair King.
Aye. On a vote of five to zero, the motion to approve the new unmanned wireless telecommunications facility at Fern Lane is approved. Let's move on to agenda item nine, recognition of one of our talented commissioners.
Supposed to arrest them.
If I saw you on the street.
One. One of us.
Okay. This starts the celebrity roast of Mr. Leonard Manukian. Allow me to read this resolution, however, that's been prepared. Whereas Mr. Leonard Manukian completed six years of service to the City of Glendale as a member of the planning commission from two thousand and two until two thousand and eight, and whereas his unselfish contribution of his personal time, energy, knowledge and expertise in the field of planning has contributed to upholding the objection, objectives of the ordinance of the city. And whereas the commission has a high regard for the ability of Mr. Manukian to analyze the various issues which have come before the planning commission during his period of service. And whereas Mr. Manukian has demonstrated strong and continuing interest in some of the many and varied problems before the commission for the purposes of improving the welfare of the citizens and protection of their property rights. And now therefore be it resolved by the planning commission of the City of Glendale that the commission extend to Mr. Manukian sincere appreciation for the years of service so graciously given. And we will use today's date on that resolution. I take it?
Yes.
Congratulations, Leonard, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I really, really appreciate it. Is this like a good conduct discharge as opposed to the honorable?
You know, if you carry that with you, it gives you free admission to movie theaters.
That's right. That's right. I believe it. I would like to thank you, Mr. Chair, as well as other commissioners, not just the three fellow commissioners sitting on the dais today, but all the other ones that have served in the past. It has been an interesting six years. It has been an enjoyable six years and an enlightening one. And hope, I hope that it has been a beneficial one for the city. And, and I would like to also thank the staff that has been with us, with me for the last six years. The work that commissioners do is meaningless unless it's for the community and it's fruitless unless it's with the support of our staff. So I want to thank you all. Mr. Hahani, who's not here, Mr. Mrs. Rillikerson, who was here, and everyone in between. Laura, it has been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manukian.
If I could just say something, because I did want to not let this moment pass and just thank Leonard for his, his service on the commission as well. He's been to my, to my left the, the entire time and I've always found him to be honest and forthright, quick thinking, ability to focus on the key issues and get to the point. And all of that has been appreciated. When, when Leonard speaks, you know, he's speaking from a, a point of, of having thought through and developed a cogent point and I always appreciated that. So thank you, Leonard.
I would second that. I've really enjoyed working with Leonard here for the last five years. And he's, we've been on opposite sides of the issues at times and on the same side at other times. And I've always found his logic and reasoning and arguments very well thought out and compelling. And I think he's a fine person to have on any kind of board or commission. I wish him well.
Thank you.
Hope we can get him appointed on another commission.
DRB.
Oh, yeah. I'm there.
I would just add, well, first off, I need to clarify something that Gary said is when he described you as being to the left of him, he meant physically and not politically, I associate.
I understand.
And again, one of, one of the joys of, of my experiences, not, not only with this commission, but the, the BZA, has been when five people get brought together with disparate backgrounds, but a common interest in terms of serving the city. It's great what those varied backgrounds and varied opinions and varied insights do in terms of, you know, pushing the vote forward in the same direction. And just to echo what everyone said, you've been invaluable, you've been a pleasure to, to participate with and we'll miss you.
I would like to add, Mr. Manukian, it's been a pleasure to work with you. We really always appreciate commissioners who really care about the community, who are knowledgeable and who read the packets. So we appreciate when you come to the, come to the commission meetings, you ask well thought out questions, you show that you care for the public and your decisions are always on target with the issues that are before the commission and we really appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. Planning Department updates?
I don't think we have any updates right now, other than I did pass out a new copy of the revised housing element to you. That'll be on the agenda for next, in two weeks, August twentieth. for next, in two weeks, August 20th. There is a copy available online on the city's website. Everybody's welcome to take a look at it. We're encouraging the public to read it and to submit comments. They can either submit comments directly to you, or they could use the online form, and they can email a comment directly to the planning department. Any comments we receive, we will bring to you at the hearing on August 20th, and that'll be at five o'clock here in Room 105 Municipal Services Building.
All right, thank you. What's our next meeting look like?
Oh, I should also point, sorry, thank you. We also have a brand-new commissioner who was nominated and appointed on Tuesday. It's Chang Lee. My understanding is he was previously on Community Development Block Grant Committee, so he is familiar with the housing issues, so I guess he's starting, picking the right meeting to start with. It'll be August 20th, and our first item will be the housing element update. And as far as the next meeting goes, the item that is on the agenda is for the housing element update.
Okay.
We anticipate there may be some people interested in speaking on it. We're not sure how big the crowd will be. That's why we limit it to one item.
All right.
And that's on the 20th of August?
That's on the 20th of August.
Okay. Comments from commissioners? I have a couple of quick ones. One won't affect Leonard, since it sounds like he's been succeeded, but as it relates to, perhaps, you know, Gary's tenure, is, just to clarify, commissioners continue to serve until they're succeeded. So if, for example, the process was extended or whatever, that commission would just stay on until someone else has taken over. So we'll always be able to maintain quorum and so on.
Exactly.
Okay. The only other thing that I'd like to suggest as, and maybe we do it on the second meeting of each month, is I'd like to get a synopsis, if you will, a report of the previous month's variance and conditional use applications and decisions. Just, you know, bullet form or a very short synopsis. I'd like to get, personally for me, some background on what's going on behind the scenes, just so we can kind of get a sense of, let's say, some general tacking of the boat, if you will. Does that sound like a good idea?
Okay.
Is that okay with staff? Is that something that you think is pretty doable?
Yeah.
All right, very good. So let's just make that kind of a traditional second meeting handout, if you will.
Sure.
And that reminded me of the website, still doesn't seem to be having the planning commission agendas posted on the website.
Yes, we do. I believe the agendas are posted.
For the past meetings.
The past meetings.
Current meeting.
I believe the agendas are posted. Are the minutes on, maybe the minutes are?
Yeah, even the minutes are, yeah.
Okay, well, maybe they've caught up. Last time I looked at it, it's...
You probably have that child lock in place.
No, I know that we are in the process of updating our website, though. We are redoing our website. We're in the process of it right now.
They're being sent to graphics for scanning on the Wednesday a week before the meeting, and then the following day it is already in the website, following day.
Good. I did have one item, which is, in the past, I know I had asked the staff for copies of the work program for the planning department, so that we, as a planning commission, had a sense of what was forthcoming in terms of the work program, and I've yet to see one, but I'd like to. And I know it's a new fiscal year, so maybe we can see this year's.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn.